I will call this meeting to order. Would you please rise with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It looks like we have a great crowd here this evening. It's nice to see all these smiling faces. Thank you for being here. And with that, we will call the roll. Start voting, please. Kristi?
We have a quorum with six councillors present. Councillor Griege previously requested to be excused.
Thank you, Kristi. Next up is agenda approval. Heather?
We would ask that council amend the agenda to include a closed session pursuant to Colorado Revised Statutes 24-4-402-4E to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop strategies for negotiations, and instruct negotiators with respect to economic development incentives.
Thank you, Heather. Council?
With that change, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that and add that we need to excuse councillor Griege.
Thank you. I've got a motion to second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Thank you, Kristi. Next up is citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizen wishing to speak may obtain and complete a speaker card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. First up, we have Emily Novatny. Please come to the podium and tell us where you live, please.
Hi, my name is Emily Novatny. I live in Alamosa, Colorado. I'm a student at Alamosa High School, and I am on the hockey team here, which you support. I'm here to speak to you on behalf of us receiving new boards. I think it'd be a great opportunity. I not only play hockey, but I also occasionally, when I can, volunteer with some of the littler people, like knee-height little people. And they're just adorable, and it's a great experience for me. One thing I realize is you're there to support them, emotionally and physically. They fall a lot. They hit the ground, not only in life but on the ice, constantly wiping out. It's hilarious. I love it. My job is to help teach them how to stand back up, because it's not as easy as it looks. You're falling all over the place. We're not penguins. We were not made to be on ice, but we learn how. We cope. And one thing about teaching kids to stand back up is it's all about the foundation. And at Alamosa Hockey Rink, the foundation is crumbling. Our boards are falling apart. It's not a stable environment on which we can continue to build and support on top of each other, to keep raising such great people. It's an honor to be in the program, and it's an honor to have the ability to play there. A little bit of help goes a long ways. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Emily. Appreciate that. Next up is Robert Pickett. Welcome, Robert.
Thank you, council. As Emily said, the new board project has kind of come at a time of dire need. I know we've come before you and asked for some of the things that might be once in the past, but it's something now that is a need. I'm president of the San Luis Valley Hockey Association, and I also coach out there. And I also am an employee. And from an employee's standpoint, I mean, you're nervous when anybody's skating around the boards, because it's like, here, I'm gonna have to fill out an incident report in 10 minutes here. And I don't think any of us want that. I would ask that you guys pass the resolution for the application for the grant, because anything we've done in the past has increased the attendance at the rink. And like they say, if you build it, they will come. I know that's hard to hold water, but if history proves itself, the more we've built and the more that you guys have added on to it has helped. The more people use the rink. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Could you tell us where you live, please?
I live at, from First Street. And the apartment's on First Street, 1264.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Next up is Dan McCann. Thank you for being here, Dan.
Thank you for having me. Dan McCann, 1809 sunset, Alamosa, Colorado. Robin Williams, age 62, took his own life recently. We lost someone forever, but his films will be around to please people for many decades to come. Everyone suffers from depression from time to time. Less than 100 years ago, people thought they were witches, demons, something was wrong with them, institutionalized them, they put them in prisons, they didn't hardly feed them. Today, there are people that can help you, and I've been there. I went in the Marine Corps at 17, and between the age of 18 and 33, I had many episodes of serious clinical depression. I've been fine now. I'm 68 for over 34 years. There are people out there that will help you. You gotta ask for help, and you may have to go back many, many times. It's too bad. He had this his whole life, and there were people that helped him, and what he did is terrible. This goes on, but at least he didn't die at 14. We have young people that take their own lives at a very young age, and that's just a total loss. When you're around people, if you ever hear anyone using the word suicide, you don't screw around. You get them help immediately, because if the next day you found out they killed themselves, you should feel guilty for the rest of your life, and you should. They need help. Get them help.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate that. Next up is Mary Van Pelt. Thank you, Mary, for being here.
Thank you, councilman. I'm Mary Van Pelt. I live on Stockton Road here in Alamosa, and I was here two weeks ago when the Viero Tower was proposed, and I sat through... It was quite lengthy, but it was quite interesting, and I came away with an opinion, so I thought I'd express it. I thought, yeah, go for it, 120-foot tower, and self-cellular communication. But I also realize it's not that easy. There's FCC regulations and ordinances, and people have lots of varying opinions, and it's rather complex. And I certainly thought about Wilma Lovato, who owns that property. And I know Wilma, and I like her a lot. She's been through hard times, and she helped me through hard times. So I stopped by her house, and I asked her what she thought. And she knows the property's up for sale, but she didn't know anything more. And I told her what I knew, so it seems if there's a decision, of course, she needs to be better informed about it. But aside from that, I, you know, I got on the Internet and, you know, see that nationwide this is an issue. People feel that it's going to tarnish our landscape from Maine to California. There's conversations about ugly cell towers. My opinion is that the lattice is not as ugly as the rigid pole of a mono tower, but... And it's also interesting, there's a, you know, there's a whole business about concealing your cell towers. You can make it look like a cactus. You can make it look like a windmill. You can make it look like a palm tree, or a giant pencil, or church bell tower. And all that was just a lot of fun, but I didn't think it was for us. So I went around physically, drove around, looked at towers east of town, the Verizon Point and the Villa Mall Tower, and many others, and, you know, Kenny TV, Century Link, the one on top of the hospital, which I hadn't paid attention to until it was pointed out that it's there, and it is. And my thought was not about that these are ugly or unsightly. My thought was that how dead and isolated this valley would be without these towers and without the power of communication and the transmission of data that's part of the daily commerce. And so my feeling is that these towers are reaching up towards our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Appreciate that. Next up is Dean Swift. Welcome, Dean. Tell us where you live, please.
Thank you. I live here in Alamosa on Lincoln Street, and I also want to speak on behalf of the hockey program. I started with the hockey program the same year it started. I don't honestly remember how many years ago it was, but it was a long time ago. And it has taught me many things throughout this time. I mean, the obvious, it's taught me how to skate and hand-eye coordination, but it's also taught me things that I'm gonna take with me for the rest of my life: discipline, work ethic, ingenuity, teamwork, persistence, responsibility, sportsmanship, and respect. All of these things, I think, are very important, and I... It's hard for me to see sometimes the rink itself sort of falling apart. I was out there skating this past year, wearing a hoodie, and I came along beside the boards at one point, and there was a screw sticking out, and it tore a big hole in that hoodie I was wearing that day. And it's... I think it would be very, very nice if we could get new boards and these sorts of things, and it is, as Rob said earlier, a necessity. I would also like to say that hockey is something that has affected me in a very positive way for the past many years, and it's something that I hope to continue on with for the rest of my life. When I looked at different college choices, which I'm going to be going to, not this coming fall, but the fall after that, I had to look at each one and see if they had a hockey program, and if they didn't, they were out. So it's been very important to me, and I know it is to other people, and I hope it can continue to be for many more years.
Thank you, Dean. Of course, you realize we're dealing with that under Regular Business Resolution Number 12, 2014, tonight. Any follow-up from staff? No? All right. Well, thank you. We will now move forward to our ceremonial items, and I have... This is a proclamation presented to the Early Iron Club members, and I have asked councillor Johnson to do the honors for us. Thank you, councillor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Proud to read this for you guys. This is a proclamation in recognition of Early Iron Car Show. Whereas the 34th Annual Early Iron Festival will be held in Cole Park in Alamosa on Labor Day weekend, August 29 through August 31. Whereas the Early Iron Car Show is a free event open to the public. Whereas Early Iron Car Show is one of the largest vintage car shows in Colorado, with over 500 vintage vehicles in the show. The show includes custom, restored, and collector car models of all types, most with a vintage of 1972 or older. Whereas the Early Iron Car Show is an all-volunteer event operated by the San Luis Valley Early Iron Incorporated, founders Craig Jonda, Ronnie Clark, Red V. Hill, John Rodriguez, Joe Booze, and Al Ballard. Whereas the Early Iron Car... Early Iron Club was formed over 30 years ago to promote the interest of street rodding. The club promotes street rodding in an environment that is safe, fun, and friendly, and family-oriented. Whereas the Early Iron Car Show has a great economic impact on the Alamosa community, filling local hotels, restaurants, and stores with street rodders and spectators from around Colorado and other states. Whereas local studies have shown local hotels, motels, restaurants, and local businesses have accommodated an average of 1,120 persons in the non-resident rodder parties over the Labor Day weekend. Now, therefore, be it hereby proclaimed on behalf of Mayor Joseph Lucero and all of City Council, we proclaim August 30 Early Iron Day. And I'm gonna go through the members of the Early Iron Club: Matt and Brandy Beckner, Eric and Jean Christensen, Chris and Melissa Clark, Helen Craig, Scott Deacon, Gabe and Lucille Duran, Greg and Suzanne Gosar, Chris and Jill Gosar, Craig Jonda, Ryan and Ashley Martin, Kenny and Kim Rodman, John and Tony Rodriguez, Karen Rodriguez, and Eddie Haley, Mark Valdez and Dolores Burns, Michael and Ronnie Wisdom, Jeff and Melanie Woodard, Kyle and Michelle Woodward. And the officers of the Early Iron Club are Jeff Woodard, President, Greg Gosar, Vice President, and Ronnie Wisdom, Secretary-Treasure. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, councillor Johnson, and if you would please come up, and we will have this proclamation that I just signed presented to you.
Jeff wants to say something.
Okay, absolutely. Just leave up there, Jeff.
Thank you. Before you all leave, we're gonna allow Jeff a few minutes to say some kind words, I'm sure. He always has something to say, and thank you for being here, Jeff.
Well, thank you. What an honor. What an honor it is. And on behalf of the club, we thank the city, we thank the council for this proclamation. It is certainly an honor. But this club is very humble, and we are humbled by this experience, but we know we couldn't do it without the community behind us. Everybody that's sitting in this room has made these car enthusiasts feel welcome in our town, and we're just... We're the guys in the center of the thing, but it takes a whole community. And when I talk about a community, I talk about not only Alamosa and the citizens of Alamosa, but the citizens of the whole San Luis Valley. We're not big enough to not include everybody that lives here, because at some point, these rodders see a lot of people that are not from Alamosa, but they're from the different parts of the San Luis Valley, and we thank them as well. We couldn't do it without the support. And the city, Hines and his guys at the park, the facility that we have here is second to none. It is second to none. Parks and Rec kick it hard, and they do more for us than we can even imagine. We've got some friends up north that are not as fortunate as we are. They don't have the relationship with the city and the PD and the different people in town, and they're struggling to even keep their show going. And it's a 300-car event, and they don't see the economic impact of it. But as you all know, each... Everybody that comes in and spends a dollar, any kind of tourism, or any event, or anything like that, that's a brand-new dollar in our economy. It's a brand-new dollar, and it circulates, and I could probably get Ronnie up here, and we could really get on a soapbox, but it'll circulate, and it'll go, you know, 2.5, 2.7 times. So if you've got 500 cars here, or 550, it's gonna be a big year this year, guys. I think we're gonna break records. But you take those people, and we figure, if you look at the economic impact study that we do, there's 2.5 people per car. Now, I have never seen that half guy. You know, if we ever find half guys, we're gonna take the top half and put it on the bottom half, and we'll make it three guys per car. But anyway, you take that many people. If they just spend $1 in this town, and you know that they spend more than $1, you know that. And they eat out, they go to the restaurants, they buy gas, they buy groceries, they shop in our community. They make a difference. And we thank you for making them feel comfortable enough to do that, to want to come back, to want to come and tell their friends. We had a group, for instance, from... We had one guy from Amarillo last year. He had such a great time. I think he's bringing, Terry, 15 cars or something this year with him. You know? He said that's the greatest car. But, yeah, we do a lot of the work, but we couldn't do it without you, and we thank the community. On behalf of this club, and I know each one of them would say the very same thing if we had the time to do it, we thank the community of the San Luis Valley, we thank the city of Alamosa. The police department is just awesome. The people love these guys. They just love them, you know? I don't know how many dozen donuts Robert Jackson got last year, but they've got this little thing going, and I think he had like a whole cart full of them. He took down the senior citizens' center. Dwayne's is gonna be the same way. The chief and his staff are doing a great job. Again, we thank you for the support. We're glad we're not having to deal with the things that the Coloradans are in Longmont. We're trying to help them. We're trying to help them keep their car show going. They told us this year, Chris Clark and Matt Beckner and I were up there, and they told us this year that this was it. They weren't gonna do it anymore because of all the problems that they're having with the city, the PD. Thank you, guys. We don't have those problems. We thank the community. Every one of you sitting here, believe me, you make a difference. You make a difference, and we thank you for that. And again, we're honored. We're humbled. We really are. And we will certainly share this with our rodders and let them know what the city's done for us. We appreciate you all, and I want to give a big shout-out to Terri Shea. She's our secretary, and she doesn't get the recognition that she needs. She's the one who fills the calls from all these guys, you know? And she does a great job, so if there's anything in the paper, mention Terri, too, will you? Because she keeps us all in line. She really does. Without her, it'd be a tough deal. But again, I can't say it enough, and I'll say it one more time. Thank you all very much. Thank the community, every one of you that are sitting here, the city, city manager, everybody that makes this happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff.
Mayor, if I could just add one comment to the group, and Jeff and his team. Jeff, I would like to come in, and your team and your staff, and also Mike. He gave me a copy of the economic impact, and when it comes to economic development, I'm really interested in that, but I just wanted to go over some numbers to let the council know, based on what Mike shared with me, how important this event has been to our city over the years. Just in spectator spending, they're estimating it to be close to about $508,000. The total regional spending for the San Luis Valley is $923,894. That's nearly $1 million that this event brings to our city and to our community and to the San Luis Valley. And it's just truly amazing to see how the numbers have risen from 40, I believe, 43 registered autos back in 1981 to now you're estimating to have about 448 registered autos. That's truly amazing. I just want to let you know that I appreciate it. If I had a hat on, I would take it off and tip it to you. Take care and keep up the great work.
As it looks right now, councillor Coleman, it looks like we're gonna be probably 550 cars.
Wow, that is amazing.
And as far as those numbers go, don't look at me for answers. Anytime you want numbers, any answers on numbers, you get ahold of Ronnie Wisdom.
Yeah, Mike and Ronnie have done a great job in providing us with information, and I'll share this information with council, but I just wanted to let you know that we greatly appreciate all the work and dedication that you all put into making this event happen in our community.
Well, thank you. We couldn't do it without everybody in this community, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Coleman. Councillor Gillespie?
I'll echo what councillor Coleman had to say, and also say that Early Iron is one of the most beloved and one of the biggest events in the San Luis Valley, and we appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Speaking of Early Iron, we gotta get to work. It's gonna be here in about 10 days, so...
Thank you very much, Jeff. We certainly appreciate everything your volunteers do, and especially your organization. Thank you for being here. We certainly do appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you all very much. Thank you very much.
You know, council, those are... These are some of the fun things that we get to do, when we get to see a lot of folks come in with volunteerism in their hearts, and it's really great to see those folks. Next up is Consent Calendar A. The consent calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we have or will receive July 2014 expenditure report, approved minutes of the regular meeting, August 6, 2014, and receive July 2014 monthly reports. Do we have any discussion?
If there's no further discussion, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, start voting, please. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council. Next up, we'll move on to Regular Business, business forward by city staff. Tonight, public works, specifically the purchase of property, 502 Eighth Street, Alamosa, Colorado, also known as 1601 Monroe. Thank you, Pat.
Good evening, council. Working within the guidelines you set, we've been able to negotiate the terms of the purchase for the last piece of right-of-way necessary for Monroe Street. It's gone back and forth for about a year, but we've finally been able to work a deal that works for the property owner and the city. This will... With this piece, we'll have a complete right-of-way for the extension of Monroe from West Eighth to West Tenth, and this will allow us to take advantage of the easements we've acquired to the south to eventually move stormwater out of the Washington addition.
Thank you, Pat. Could you just give us a little history on that, how that happened to be an encumbrance?
Before that area was annexed into the city, the county vacated many of the roads in the south part of the Washington addition. This was one of those roads. When the Patterson subdivision was accepted, they dedicated the remainder of the right-of-way for Monroe Street from West Eighth to West Tenth, but this little piece was owned by the adjoining to the west. So this was... This is the last piece of the pie, basically.
Thank you, Pat. Council, do we have any questions with Pat? Thank you, Pat. Appreciate it. Oh. How's Stefano?
I approve this. I suggest we approve this.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
If there was a motion, I'll second it.
Have a motion and second any further discussion on expenditure, I'm sorry, the purchase of property at 1502 8th Street, otherwise known as 1601 Monroe?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanna make clear for council that part of the closing costs will be the cost of a title insurance policy that the city will pay as well. Sometimes that's considered closing costs, sometimes not. But the, the deal is that the city will bear that cost as well, just to ensure that there is good title.
Do you have any estimate on that?
On what the title insurance will be? It's, it's a fraction of the purchase price, so it's gonna be just a few hundred dollars.
Is that the only closing cost?
There will be closing costs through the title company to handle the closing as well.
I'd just like to see, I'm glad to see this move forward. I think a street is much needed between 8th and 10th on the east side of the school over there. So I'm, I'm glad to see this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gillespie. Any further discussion? If not, start voting, counsel. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next up is Parks, Recreation and Library Resolution Number 11, Establishing Lee Fields Dog Park. Thank you, Hines.
You're welcome. Good evening, councilors. The resolution for you, number 11, is establishing Lee Fields Dog Park. The process started back in April. We had our first public forum at that time. And as a group, we came up about 12 identifiable options for a dog park. This also went to another public forum on June 24th, and then two meetings of our advisory rec board. And it was narrowed down to four, and then finally two. You have the two options before you, one at Lee and one at the Cattails Golf Course. And at the rec board advisory meeting on the 14th, the recommendation was to do the Lee Field this year. And on the staff side, we're committed to doing a second park at Cattails in 2015.
Thank you, Hines. Counsel, does anyone have a question or comment for Hines? Counselor Veale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hines, I just like to first appreciate you and your staff for all the hard work you've been doing on this. I attended both of those public input meetings, and they were run very efficiently. I really appreciate that. I have a question for Heather or for Hines. According to, to the budget, if I, if I remember correctly, there, there was 20,000, or there will be 20,000 set aside for Dog Park?
That 20,000 was in the unfunded column, so it was not in the near future.
Okay.
So what we're doing this year, we're finding some savings from some of the other capital projects that the Parks and Rec have done or in the process of doing. And we feel confident that we can cover the $5,000 to $6,000 expenses involved in establishing the Lee Field Dog Park this year.
Thank you, Hines. And then, just a, a brief comment. While I attended those meetings, I kinda got the vibe a little bit that the folks, our constituents wanted kind of a bigger piece of property, or to make the dog a little bit bigger. I, I like the idea that we're gonna have two different parks. I really like the idea that we're gonna have one on the south side and on the north side as well. Is there any way, and I would propose this to council, if we could make this park here a little bit bigger?
There's always a possibility. As you, as you know, between the north and east sides, that, those are the chain link fences for the, the softball fields that are already in place. And we're kinda playing off of those fences. The rest of the fence that we're putting in is a four by, two by four wire fencing, which is easily moved, can be rearranged in the future. I mean, we could bring it down a little bit further. I think it's just a good start at 1.5 acres, what that's set at right now, to just see how much use would be, to make use of the trees that are along both the north and east sides. And it's more open in the middle section. So there's a possibility where you can drive this down a little bit further, maybe wrap, wrap it around the softball field. But then we have to kinda worry about the home runs and stuff that comes through there, and how much protection is, there is for that. Going west is kinda prohibited because at that point, you're starting to get into the drainage that comes down from the north side of the rec center. So that, that's kinda like an oxbow back in there. So you really can't go too much further east without really, you know, raising the ground up, basically, you know, in that area. There's some possibilities where you can bend out that diagonal out a little bit further. But I mean, for the, right now, I'd like to see just as is. And then if, if there's more need, we can always bring it back out.
I think also, just to make sure everyone's on the same page, there were essentially three projects in the CIP this year that Hines and his staff have been able to bring in under budget. And of though, that, that gives us maybe about 60,000. And we've been trying to keep track of what we've been trying to use those savings for. So you might remember when we looked at the tennis courts, we used some of that funding to help cover that. And then the other item on your agenda tonight is to use about 48,000 of that as match for the ice rink. And so there is, it's kind of some moving targets there, which isn't fun from a financial perspective. But there might be a couple thousand dollars if the other projects definitely come in under budget as we anticipate. And we don't have any other movement on the other numbers. So as Hines talks about the topography and, and some of those other considerations, it's something we can definitely look at to see if there's ways to, to get a little bit more in there. We're just not sure how much we might be able to.
And also, if you've read the, the commitee, we're also piggyback on an Eagle Scout project. So we're saving some money in that where they're going to make some of the, the dog park amenities, the benches and the signage. So that's what we're looking for, for, for that part of the project, so.
Thank you, Counselor Veale. Counselor Johnson?
Just thank you and your staff. Hines, you and Andy put in a lot of extra work and time. This project's been ongoing for a long time talking about it. Good input from the community. We had some good forums. Thanks to the public that attended the meetings and gave their good input. Without that, we really, the councilors that went to this, we're not dog experts, as you found out. So your input was tremendous. It helped us a bunch. Thanks for the creative financing and for the savings throughout the years, the year that makes these things possible. So appreciate it and pass it on to your staff. Thank you.
Sure, well, you bet. You know, and then having the public input, especially on the amenities and the fencing stuff, we, we've kinda found out we don't have to spend the 20,000 or something like that, that which is, which is great. There's only certain areas that would really have to make it a real good sturdy chain link fence. The rest of it can be the, the, the two by four wire fencing and stuff. So that's, that saved a lot of money right there.
Exactly. They gave us really good input for cost savings as well. And then the idea of the two parks, you know, that stuff that I never would have thought of. And we got that idea from our group and just worked out good. And thanks for listening to the community. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Coleman?
Hines, I also would like to just thank you and your staff for the hard work and dedication that you put into this. And I've received calls from some of the constituents out there in the community. And the thing that they really like is how you, you and your team listen to their input. For example, like Donna and Rob here, and also listening to how important the Eagle Scout participation part is a part of this project. So continue to do that. And thank you so very much. I wanna thank the community as a whole as well for coming out and giving us positive input in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. And thank you, Hines. It's, this project has been in the works for quite a while. I know a lot of folks that, that own pets have been excited about this project as of late. And they've been waiting for a long time. Thank you for, for all the work you and your staff have done. And thank you, Heather, for, for what you do as well on this. All right. Gentlemen, what are your wishes on Resolution Number 11, 2014? Counselor Johnson?
If there's no further questions, I move that council adopt Resolution Number 11, 2014, is presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, start voting, counsel. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Hines.
You're welcome.
Next up is, next up is Resolution Number 12, 2014, Supporting GOCO Grant Submission for Ice Rink Board Replacement Project.
As you heard from the audience during the public comment, and also what we heard and discussed at the rec board meeting back in June and again here in August, the need to replace the ice board rinks has, surface has come, it's like cream, it comes to the top. And basically, we were wondering what we were going to do for a GOCO project, and that's pretty much came to the top very quickly. So basically, we got, we ended up getting a quote. As you see in the, in the paper, it's 159,000 for a complete board replacement installed by the company. Also, during the discussion at the last rec board meeting, there was some discussion of where to locate it. I think right now, our prime concern is trying to be, to meet the safety needs of those boards, replace that and not put them in right of way. I think, you know, if we do get the grant in December, I think we'd put them in toward the second half and then work on some other issues and grants, such as the mineral impact grants that came in as part of the discussion during the rec board. To maybe, maybe get a better complete facility than just doing it haphazardly. But right now, I think getting the boards replaced is, is on a must need basis right now.
I think part of what Hines has also been doing is to reach out to the public for a long-term solution on, for the location, if it needs to stay at the park, if there's a desire to see it moved. And so these are gonna continue to be some discussions that we have as far as when we invest more money, we wanna make sure we're investing it in the right way, especially if it's gonna be a different location in the future. And so there has been the one meeting overwhelmingly, I think, the desire was to potentially move it to the recreation facility. If that is something that we look at doing in the future, it's, it's obviously, will be a few years out unless there's funding that we can secure for that. But with the safety issues, the recreation board felt that this is something we still need to be moving forward with now in order to address that, even though we have some long-term decisions to make in regards to the entire facility.
And as Heather, Heather had brought up earlier, the, the save, we, we have the savings in the capital projects to meet our 30% cash match on this one at $48,000. And with GOCO filling in the rest at 111,000.
Thank you, Hines. Counsel, any questions from Hines? Counselor Veale?
Yes, Hines, what are the chances that GOCO approves our grant?
I mean, I get that asked quite a bit. It's, it's a 50/50. It really is. You really don't know because you're competing against several other projects. And what happens is these projects go to the reviewers and they score them. And then, you know, basically, it depends on how they feel our need is compared to somebody else. For the most part, I've learned during the fall cycle, in November, usually you get a pretty good hint of whether you're gonna get it or not. Of course, you know, by December 9th meeting, they can always change their mind. But I don't see that happening very often. But still, it's like the skate park, you know, it took us two times to get the skate park. On the second time, we were, we were awarded. The first time, sometimes you don't know what they're looking for. And the key there is, if you don't get it, is to get the reviews from your, from your application and then make modifications on your, of subsequent application. And that, that seems to make that second one a winner.
Thank you, Hines.
Yep.
Thank you, Counselor Veale. Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, Hines, is there any, these dasher boards, is there any material that is being made that might last longer or fasten in a different manner that it would last longer?
The, the new boards are what you call all artificial, non-organic, no wood. It's all, it's either plexiglass or a some kind of composite with steel or aluminum bracings. So there is no wood rotting as, as is occurring right now.
Okay, good.
When we first put the rink in, we got the used boards from Los Alamos. And then we, this last boards we got from Gunnison. So we've, we've been going along with used boards for, I think, since the start of the, of the ice rink. So I think now we're approaching the time where these set of boards are pretty much near the end of their life. And it's time, I guess, to, I guess, bite the bullet and get real boards, get new boards that will last 10 to 15 years easily.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gillespie. Counselor Coleman?
Hines, I noticed that in your report, that there are a lot of safety hazards out there for the kids with the screws sticking out. And also, the coaches mentioning, mentioning that the kids are not able to do all the drills that they can do. By buying these new boards, I have a two-part question. Number one, if we buy good quality boards, will we be able to transport them to the new facility if we relocate in the future? Or the money that we purchased now for the boards are just good for this specific location?
The, the rink that we have over at Carroll Park right now, it's a 75 by 200, which is smaller than the normal rink. We would but be buying an 85 by 200, which is your standard rink size. The boards are able to be moved from one location to the other. I already talked to GOCO, just a kind of a hypothetical question. They said, yes, you can. That would not invalidate the, the GOCO grant if we got it. Yep.
Okay. And what other safety hazards would be addressed by addressing the needs that we're trying to address right now?
Well, I know in the near term, I don't think we'll be able to get these boards in for this season. I mean, this is just realistic. Timing wise, it just, I don't think it will happen, especially when we're trying to have them install it into a December timeframe, which we're probably, December 9th, we wouldn't get them until mid-December or later. And it's, it's winter here. So it'd be really awful for them to come in there and try to replace those boards. And probably within our, our hockey season already. We'd be working with the SLV Youth Hockey Association and our staff. And we're going to go through their board by board, I guess, section by section, and try to repair it as much as we can to make it safe for this coming year. And that's probably going to end up using some of the other savings we, we've already gotten from capital projects. So we're going through our savings rather quickly. We're not overspending, but we're going to use probably all the savings we've got this year into taking care of all these little items this year. That's pretty much it. I think we're just gonna have to make it, make sure it's gonna be safe for this year. And then by next year, either the new boards are gonna be in place, or we're gonna be in a new facility, in a different location.
Okay. I think it's important because I was out there a few times this winter. And it was, I was really impressed with the amount of people who were out there. And it was freezing cold. But I really think this is something that we really should move forward with for the community and for the youth, so that they can continue to do well like Emily, Robert and Dean expressed in their earlier comments. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. Counselor Gillespie?
I motion we approve Resolution Number 12, 2014, Supporting GOCO Grant Submission for the Ice Rink Board Replacement Project.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on Resolution Number 12, 2014? If not, start voting, please. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. And on behalf of all the users, thank you, too.
Thank you, counsel. Next up is City Clerk, Municipal Court, Public Hearing on Ordinance Number 10, 2014, An Ordinance Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement with Alamosa County for Conduct of the November 4th, 2014 Coordinated Election for a Special Improvement District. All right. That is Heather or Legal?
Could be any of us, actually. But this is a public hearing on the agreement that will allow the county clerk, who was just here, to conduct the election for the city's one ballot issue. And as you know, that's the special improvement district at Carroll Park. The estimated cost of that election to the city for its proportional share of the election costs will be around $1,000. And this is the only practical way to get that election, which is required for funding of the special improvement district to occur.
Thank you, Eric. And with that, I will open the public hearing on Ordinance Number 10, 2014, and ask anyone in attendance to speak either for or against this ordinance. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on Ordinance Number 10, 2014, and bring it back to council for discussion or decision. There's no questions, Mr. Mayor. I move that we, that we approve Ordinance Number 10, 2014. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, counsel? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Counsel? If not, start voting, Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Counsel. And that brings us to committee reports. Counselor Vehill?
Thank you, Mayor. I went to the Alamosa School Board meeting on Monday. They're just gearing up for school to start. Some of the kids start tomorrow, but everybody for sure goes to school on Friday. They're, the Maroon Pride Group, the Athletic Booster Club is taking off. They have a bunch of activities planned for the upcoming sports events, and they want the community to be involved as much as they can. A congressional award was given to Mr. Sean Van Webb. Miss Lily LeVeure was honored as a Hershey's Track and Field Games North American finalist. She got third place. The, the top two are from Canada, Canada, so she was the first American to win and, to get third place, right? And Mr. Joshua Trahan, the new AD and, and Vice Principal at the high school, was named a finalist of Coach of the Year for the United States Track and Field Cross-Country Coaches Association. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vehill. Counselor Johnson?
Okay. I attended a Historic Preservation Committee the other day. We did get a new member, as all you know, we interviewed, and I'm going to kill his last name. I just call him Mr. Ralph. But it's Symbaly, I believe is how you pronounce his last name. Great addition to the board, jumped right in the conversation, and he's very well versed on the historic aspects of all the stuff. He owns a couple of historic buildings, and he does rehab on some of them, too. So that was a great choice. He fit right in with the group. About the major thing is coming our way, probably within the next couple meetings, is, well, there was a request for historic designation of a property by the railroad, one of the old housing units. It's a three-plex, and it was used to house the railroad workers, and that's the remnants of it. And so, that should be coming our way fairly quick. And I think that covers most of the highlights. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Coleman?
I also, this week, I met with Mike and Ronnie Wisdom with the San Luis Valley Economic Development Resources Group. And I was very impressed when I got a chance to see this report and the amount of dollars that are spent in the San Luis Valley over that weekend, and it's over a million dollars is what they're estimating this year. So when, when they came in earlier, I also wanted to make sure that we, we recognize some of the behind-the-scenes things that a lot of those people have to do to make sure that everything runs efficiently. And another thing that Mike pointed out to me was that when they first started out, and back in nineteen eighty-one, it was real hard and challenging, but the support that the council and also the rest of the community had given over the years has really helped this group to grow and expand. So I was just really impressed with this report, and I'll make sure everyone gets a copy of it as well.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. Any other committee reports? Staff announcement. Heather?
As Heinz works his way up towards the podium, he does have some updates for Parks and Recreation. But I do want to draw your attention to the council calendar. We are going to start really digging into the budget next month for September, beginning with a work session before your next meeting on September third. On September tenth, we're going to have a joint session between the City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we're going to be covering two topics. The first one is the recommendation from staff on the potential cell tower standards. It's something to at least get the discussion going. We do anticipate that there's going to be questions and probably modifications, but it's at least a starting point for both groups to evaluate what those standards are, and if we're missing something, or if something needs to be modified. The second item is presentation of the capital improvement plan. We had one work session that talked about the different format. At this work session, we're actually going to present the weighted projects. We'll be tracking if there's any changes, where if something was anticipated last year to be in twenty sixteen, but may be recommended for a different year. If there's those types of changes, we'll make sure we're tracking that. But it's, it's a really good process, and it's, it's something that's going to improve as we continue to move forward. So we'll present that. It's not something you will be making any decisions on. It's just a chance for you to see the projects, see how they went through the prioritization process. And then, when we have our next budget meeting, or one of the future ones, is when we'll connect that to the fund balance as well, and have a discussion on, here's what we can comfortably do in the budget, and if there's an amount, you would want to go into the fund balance as well in order to achieve a few more projects. So that won't be at the work session. It'll be at one of the other work sessions that we have with council on the budget. So those are coming up. And then, I'm not sure if Kristi's received word from everyone as far as from the CML District meeting, but that is also coming up in September, and I think there is a group of us going up there to represent Alamosa. Heinz?
Right.
Thank you, Heather. Heinz?
This is referring back to our Parks and Rec Mass email that went out this afternoon. Some highlights from it. The tennis court resurfacing. We received delivery of over sixteen thousand pounds of tennis court material from our contractor yesterday, and that'll be used for the surfacing of both Boyd and Carroll tennis courts. And the, I talked with the contractor today, and he is expected to start at Boyd on September third. Okay. Youth soccer, even though the registration is closed, we still have a few openings still left. So if you know anybody or you wish to sign up, there's still a few slots open. Game starts September sixth. The cost for the youth is twenty dollars. Uniform, if you need it, is ten dollars. And you still need some volunteer coaches, if anybody's out there wants a volunteer or a soccer coach. Youth flag football, the registration's been extended to next Monday, August twenty-fifth, and it's available for kids, second through sixth grades. And the season will start September ninth, and it's also twenty dollars, and the uniforms included in that. Women's basketball, team registration continues through the second of September. The cost is a hundred and seventy-five dollars per team, and out of that, you get at least ten season games. You get double elimination and, and a season tournament. And on that, the player registration fee is thirty dollars per player. And the season there begins September fifteenth. One of the things that we're doing again this year is a sports and recreational equipment swap, and that'll be on September third from five-thirty to seven-thirty. In that, we, anybody who's got some old equipment, shoes, cleats, chin guards, uniforms, helmets, gloves, bicycles, skateboards, whatever you have on that's used for recreation, can bring it, starting at five-thirty. If you brought something during that first hour, you can also take something home with you. It's no cost to anybody. And then, if you didn't bring anything, but you still need something, come the second hour from six-thirty to seven-thirty, and you can get it for free if it's available. Two things. Alma is the last Sunday at six, and Cole Park will be this Sunday at six o'clock, and it's the SLV Big Band. And as you already know, and Cole Park will be the third birthday annual early yard on the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth.
Thank you, Heinz. And questions of Heinz? Counsel? Counselor Vehill?
Heinz, I should, I probably should have asked this before, but when will, when will that dog park be completed, when opening, that type of stuff?
You know, I'm looking for this year still. The Eagle Scout project is kind of dependent on when he can get all his paperwork in. He was saying October, the later of November is, is a good possibility for him. And that will involve also some kind of group effort from them to, to clean out some of the underbrush. We're going to have, as a staff, we'll have to go in and take out the horse railing that's in there, in that section, and then knock down that berm that's on that horse railing to kind of even it out a little bit more. And we'll probably need to do some rough mowing in there also. But other than that, I'm, I'm looking for this year sometime. And the fencing is going to be really a piece of cake. I mean, it's, the, the wire fencing should be easy to put up. We're using T-posts, and the only thing that's really going to take a little bit of effort. We'll be taking out a little section of fence about ten feet right by the, the, right behind the concession booth at Lee Fields, and make that better into a in-and-out, and put a little, I forget what the name of that is. That little, well, that little...
Corral?
Corral, a corral. A little corral that goes in before you get into it. And we'll do, be doing that on that side, and also on the southwest side. Because we'll have, we're going to have some parking there. We're going to put some road base in. It's pretty sandy over there, so it's good to have some little firmer ground for cars to park on. So we'll have a corral on both, at both northeast and southwest. So it'll be two entrances to that. And people will be able to either get it from Lee Fields, over there by the pavilion at Lee Fields, or come up to the south side of the fairgrounds, and then mosey on over there to the north side.
Thanks, Heinz.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Vehill. Counselor Coleman?
And Heinz, I just have a brief comment. I met with the youth football coaches yesterday, and they just want to thank you and your staff for allowing them to utilize those fields over there close to the rec center, and we greatly appreciate that.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. Thank you, Heinz.
You're welcome.
Any other staff announcements? No? Then we'll move on to counsel comment. Counselor Johnson?
A couple of things tonight. We had a very nice employee barbecue. I wanted to thank staff in the committee that did that, put it together real nice. I missed my report on the marketing board, so I'll give you a real quick one, and because I wanted to, I had the opportunity to chat with Chief Oaks earlier last week. Really good comments from the barbecue in the park, feedback from the barbecuers about our police department, about our park and rec staff. It's really nice to hear good things like that, just like early iron today. Really nice to hear those type of reports back. The people want to come back. They cannot believe our police department is such a friendly group of guys and try to help them. And that's really nice for us to hear. So I appreciate that. One other thing, and I don't have my notes, so I'm guessing on the date. I believe it's September third. They're doing the quarter, the Sand Dunes Quarter at the, at the fourth?
The third, I, I think the third is here, isn't it, Heinz?
Yes.
At the rec center.
Yeah. And they're, yeah, they're having a get-together here on the, on the third, but the fourth is actually over at the Sand Dunes. And there's good, they're doing it during the day so we can accommodate a bunch of kids. We're taking a whole bunch of school kids up there to get that big hoopla going. But that, this is a really big thing. That's the only national park that's recognized in the state of Colorado, and it is a big deal, and we should make it a big deal. So anyone who could attend that would be greatly appreciated. And I believe that is it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Coleman?
Yes, I would like to make a comment. Chief Oaks, thank you and your, your staff for the wonderful job you're doing. I had a, a couple constituents are interested in maybe participating in the, in the Neighborhood Watch program. And if you ever think about starting that up again, just let me know, and I'll give you their names. And they said they would really like to participate in that. Another thing I just wanted to make a comment on is that the Alamosa High School football season is about to start, and I would like to encourage everyone in the community to come and support our high school football team, and come out to a full season of Friday Night Lights here in Alamosa, and show, show our support on a regular basis. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. Counselor Vehill?
Yes, I have two comments as well. And the first one is for Chief Oaks as well. The Neighborhood Watch, got a couple calls from folks about seeing if we can get that in order again. And the second thing is more of a question, maybe for Pat or Heather, on a glass crusher for the recycling center. Where, where are we at with that, that type of stuff?
Counselor Vehill had, had given me a bit of a heads-up that he was going to be asking this question. And since the retreat with council discussing some interest in, in this project, Pat has pulled together some information that after he passes out, he'll review his numbers. These are very rough estimates. He, you know, we can, we can do more research, but this gives us a fill of how we handle glass now by taking it to the landfill, what that cost is compared to if we were to purchase this equipment and use it, what that does for the cost of the glass. I will tell council that you, we're handing this out tonight. You can ask questions. You can think about it. But this is also something that Pat and I have put into the CIP, and he has been doing some preliminary prioritization of it. And so, when it comes back before you, as part of the CIP, I'll make sure to point out where it, where it fell as far as the prioritization, and you guys can have continued discussion at that point as well.
Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Counselor Vehill. Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, I'd also like to commend Chief Oaks on representing the police department. We had three or four individuals in the Rio Grande Sportsman Club Competition Shoot. I understand they took first place and third place. Officer Sergeant Cooper.
Mayor, if we could have Pat review those numbers quickly. Thank you.
I was getting there. Thank you, Pat.
No problem. Just like Heather said, after, after some interest was shown at the, at the retreat, I went ahead and put these numbers together. She gave me the heads-up that this would be asked tonight, so it was an opportunity to pull these out, knock the dust off of them, so to speak. We, before I can get my head around any kind of project, I've just got to reduce it to numbers. That's, that's the way my mind works. So I wanted to know how much glass is in our waste stream, how much we pay for the glass that we take to the landfill, and if there would be a savings realized if we had, if we had a pulverizer. So based on, based on EPA estimates of, of glass concentrations in municipal waste streams, tipping fees, cost to drive to the landfill and back, operation of the trucks, et cetera, et cetera, we're paying twenty-five dollars and forty-three cents a ton for every ton of glass we haul to the landfill. We should be, based on those estimates, we hauled a total of five thousand six hundred and seventy-six tons of waste to the landfill in two thousand and thirteen. Based on EPA estimates, two hundred and eighty-four tons of that would have been glass. So we can, we can reduce that to a cost per ton. The pulverizer itself, and bear in mind, these numbers are for, are for new equipment. There's, you can find a thousand dump trucks for sale, used dump trucks for sale. I haven't been able yet to find any used glass crushers for sale. But I wouldn't, you know, we can't preclude the possibility that that happens. A new, a new pulverizer that would, that I, that would work for us and allow us a little room to expand as the, as the service expands and the use increases, would be about forty-five thousand dollars to buy and set up. That's brand-new equipment. With the estimated parts for wear, wear parts and, and power, we should be able to crush glass for about eleven dollars and thirty cents a ton. So after the initial upfront investment, we can go from twenty-three, or twenty-five dollars a ton to eleven.
And these numbers do assume that we have a hundred percent participation from our community from a glass recycling perspective. So we would probably need to factor in that without curbside recycling, people would have to separate it out and then make a trip to the recycling center. So we wouldn't probably see a hundred percent participation.
Yeah, that, that's what that payout number is at the bottom. We, we, it's unrealistic to expect a hundred percent participation, but I had to use something to just, to come up with, with a payout. So if, in a perfect world, we, we captured one hundred percent of the glass in our waste stream, and the EPA estimates are correct, it'd be about an eleven-year payout.
Thank you, Pat. Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, Pat, quick question. If, is there a use for the glass after it's crushed?
There's a lot of uses. We can, it's being used for playground material. It's being added to road base. It's used for pipe bedding. It's actually used as an aggregate in asphalt. There's just, there's a lot of different uses. It's, it's, it's safe. There's no sharp edges on it. And you get, you basically get two, two streams out of the crusher. You get one that's almost like a sand, and you get another one that's like a three-eighths inch chip. And there, that, those chips, if you, if you sort your glass colors, there are towns that are using it for, for landscape bedding. The Cortez is in, in the middle of getting a project going now. They're building an eighteen-mile trail, so, and they're gonna, they're gonna make it out of, out of crushed glass.
So is there, there, it sounds like there is a possibility that we could find savings in other areas as far as playground stuff and?
Potentially. I, I don't know that, I don't know that we can count on that or that we can really quantify it right now. We don't normally use pipe bedding because we don't have rock in the soil. So we, we typically use native material. We can, we have a lot of places we can get rid of it. That's, that was one of the things that I wanted to make sure. You know, this, this isn't necessarily a recycling effort as much as it is a reuse effort.
And the reason I ask that, we've talked about recycling glass over the last three or four years on and off. And the, the problem, the hitch we always hit was, once we crushed it, we'd have to ship it out. And the cost of shipping it out was more than the program itself. So if we can find a way to use it without shipping it out, that would be the, maybe the savings we're looking for.
I, you know, based on, based on the volumes we're gonna be, I would expect, I think, just, just public works, just, just filling trenches, I think we could probably get rid of a lot of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Johnson. I had an observation. You know, we, we, we talk about being a recycling society. I think this is one of the areas where many of the folks that I visit with over at the recycling center always wonder about. They always wonder about, what are we gonna do with our glass? Because it's heavy, and it, it's reusable, actually. And so I think this is a wonderful opportunity for not only our community, but essentially the entire valley to utilize this product once it's in a usable state. But the savings alone are pretty large, seems like here, Pat. Appreciate the numbers and appreciate the effort. You, staff, everybody has done on this. I, I think this is something that Council has been trying to enact for quite a while. Councilor Vehill?
I totally agree with you a hundred percent, Mr. Mayor. I know a lot of families in town who, who save their glass and have to wait for a trip to Pueblo to drop it off in La Vida or Salida. And I really appreciate you getting these numbers together, Pat. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. And I guess that does it for council comment. I will now entertain a motion for our executive session. And after the executive session, we will come back into a regular session, and no further business will be discussed.
I make a motion that we move into executive session?
Second? We need, I believe we have to delineate what it's for. Councilor Coleman?
Specify the, the citation to the statute.
I make a motion that we move into executive session pursuant to CRS SS twenty-four dash four dash four zero two, four E, to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop strategies for negotiations, and instruct negotiations with respect to economic development incentives.
Second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No? Start voting, please. Christie?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Council. Give us a few minutes, audience, and we will move into executive session.